Just anything, but in light of Ms. Sampson's comments, I understand that when you're using taxpayer funds on a bid, that it's state law that you at the public meeting have three presentations, three bids, I have to be presented, and then you guys talk about it and decide there. And you keeping that secret, and then the other two, if there were any other bids, it's, I think that's going against state law. But the other thing is, I would like to know the board, are you missing all those pages that we are? And if you are, were you gonna bring it up, that there's no amount of this bid? I mean, we do need a new trash company. But this seems like it's just one person's desire, and they talk, and there's all these amounts. We don't even know if it's higher than the present one. And it's just so, if the board, if you're missing those pages, were you going to bring them up, or were you not? And if you're not missing them, I would like to assign one board member to double check the public packet every year, I mean, every meeting, to see if the public is getting what you have. In the light of transparency.
I mean, I downloaded off the same links as you did, I have all the pages. I went on the, I went on the-
So you didn't have your own copy, you just went on the public comments and printed that?
I did.
Okay, well, we can all see.
All right.
If they're not. So can a board, everybody has all the pages, except the public. And what are you guys making a decision on? Just already said, this is the one?
I only have the pages that you have. I have the same pages you have. We don't, I didn't get a packet. We just get whatever's on the documents, meetings, that's what we see. Those links that you see is what we're seeing. So we haven't, I haven't seen more than one quote.
And then, do you even have a quote? Because on the pages we received, there is no quote.
I do have another quote that was hired. And I did share that, I believe, to a lot of the board members through email. And at some point in time, we can make that public.
But sometimes the cheapest isn't always the best either. There might be other things offered. And I think the whole board is a board, should be looking at the whole package. And I think the law is you have to get three bids and presentations.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments?
Artie, can you hear me?
Who is this? Yes.
This is Joanne.
Oh, hey, Joanne. Good to have you.
I can't get my computer to work. I'm on the phone right now.
All right, we'll mark you as being present right now, so.
Thank you. Have a lot to come with this thing.
Yep. All right, any other public comments? Not seeing any public comments.
Artie, Artie.
Yes.
Who are we using for a city attorney, if you don't mind me asking?
It all depends on what it is. For bill, for our general law, we're using law offices, Janelle Mossit, for building issues. We've been using Chris Anderson.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other public comments? Okay, moving right along. The consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting of February first minutes and check approval from board meeting of February first, and the checks dispersed between February first and February fifteenth.
Okay, we have motion. Who supported that?
Joanne.
Okay, all right, we have motion to support any discussion on the consent agenda. Hearing none. Everyone approve on the consent agenda, signify by saying aye. Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. All right, next we have under new business, a presentation of No Limits Fishing Adventures. You guys on?
Yeah, I'm on, Artie. This is Blair.
Oh, hey, Blair. Introduce yourself to the board.
Dave is on as well. My name is Blair Hughes. I live at nine eight six nine Willow Court. Dave, you want to go?
And I emailed your PowerPoint presentation to the board.
Yeah, so, not to go through that, hopefully you've had a chance to look at that. It was something that Artie asked that if we could put something together for you guys. Basically, No Limits Fishing Adventures, as you saw, if you read through it, we're a nonprofit organization, and we focus on taking handicapped children, special needs kids, disabled veterans, basically anybody that's physically challenged out on Lake St. Clair, St. Clair River, and Detroit River probably, for a fishing charter. Our business is strictly to take those folks out on the water, allow them to enjoy the water with their families. Many of those folks never get the opportunity. If any of you have ever had to deal with special needs individuals, you know what, how hard their lives are, what they go through each and every day. So Dave came up with the idea. Dave and I have partnered on a couple of different things, the Sturgeon Festival that was at the park there, we were pretty heavily involved in that, as well as we are the co-directors of the Bay Area Fishing Tournament. But our main goal is, for this year, we're having a special boat made that's being outfitted by the manufacturer. One of the presidents of the company has a special needs son, so he's very in tune with the needs. We met with them a few months ago. They're designing the boat, so it's going to be handicap accessible. It's going to have special constraints put on it to allow wheelchairs to be on the boat. It's a tri-tune, so it's a more stable platform. And then basically, the business model is that we're going to offer these fishing trips at no charge to the folks that go, other than they'll have to get a Michigan, State of Michigan fishing license, so a day license. And we're working with some local vendors to make that process really easy for those folks. We'll take them out on the water for those that are just looking to get out on the water, it'll probably be a short trip, three hours or so. And then if we have some disabled veterans or other folks that are fishermen that want to get out for a little bit longer, we'll go up to six hours. We're only going to offer this two days this year, so that we can kind of feel it out. And we're hoping that we would be able to partner with Clay Township and use the pier as our point of mooring, or where our point of base of operation is. We've talked to a few people, now some of the more, the commercial marinas don't seem to want to entertain it. And we do have a couple of private individuals that have offered to help us facilitate that. But when we saw the fishing pier, we saw what was there, talked to Artie, we also have a partner that is going to install a lift to allow that pond, that tri-tune, to elevate up and down as the water raises and lowers over the course of the summer, to allow us to have a smooth transition for a wheelchair getting on there. So the lift itself is a pretty significant investment that we're willing to take on. It's about sixteen thousand dollars. And then Dave Malkovich, my partner in this, owns barrier free construction, and that's our major sponsor of our, of our, of our business. They basically are helping finance it. Again, we're a nonprofit, so we're just, we just thought it would be a great opportunity to showcase the park. I know it's under the project down there at the fishing pier, still got a few more phases to go. We're definitely going to be involved in the local media. We've also got photographers and videographers that are going to partner with us and help us promote this. So our ask of you guys is, we had a contract drawn up, we're looking to see that if you guys would donate that spot, we will invest in the lift, we will invest in a little bit of infrastructure to make it a little bit nicer at the water's edge, if you will, based on your input and your approval of any signage or anything like that. So I think it'll be, as a resident, but I also know that a hundred percent of everybody that we've talked to have been supportive of this. And I think it'd be a feather in Clay Township's cap, if we could say, No Limits Fishing Adventures, Pearl Beach, Michigan, or Clay Township, Michigan. So that's what the ask is. I had a drafted up contract, I believe, Clay Township Attorney or Legal Representation, looking at that right now.
Yeah, I just want to tell the board that, our attorney wanted to tweak it somewhat. Blair and actually did most of the work on this contract, but we're not attorneys, and they wanted to tweak it a little bit. So I don't have the final document ready yet. Now, so Blair, just so everyone's clear, you want us, or I say us, Clay Township provide the dock space. And to back up, actually, you know, Blair came, they called me, asked, hey, Artie, you know where we can, you know, dock this boat? We, you know, we have a problem. A lot of the regular marinas, the docks aren't that wide. Yeah, Pearl Beach Pier, you know, so we met down there, and they thought this was going to be a perfect spot for it. And I, I like, I like the idea myself, right from the get-go. So you're going to want a place to install the lift. Do we need any permits for that lift? I believe it just sits on the ground, right?
Yeah, our partner that's working on the lift, marine contractors, said that because there's already a couple columns in the water, we won't, we probably won't need any special permits or anything like that. However, he's, he can go through the process to make sure that whatever we need to get or do, we can. It does take a little bit of time if you do have to go through and pull a permit. But so far, based on just looking down at what we have, there really is very limited, if any modification, to the pier itself.
Okay, and I assume you would, you would need some electricity, so you'd want us to provide some electricity?
Yeah, we, whatever that, you know, fee is for that, we'd be willing to absorb that cost.
We could, yeah, we could, we could pull, pull the permits for, for that, and I'm sure our board would probably be willing to forgive the permit fees for the electrical permit. And so, and then I know we talked about putting a little bit of signage, and you could put some literature there next to the boat, right?
Yeah, we just like to make it nice for the folks that come down, who are going to go on the charter. So where the boat is moored, we probably have some type of small signage. The boat itself is going to have advertising on it for the business. And then we thought it'd be nice if we could throw up a portable canopy the day that we do the charter, so that we can greet the folks, and kind of make it an event. Then also, too, it might give us some opportunities for some photo opportunities.
Okay. So anybody have any questions for Blair?
Yeah, I got a question. The dockage of the boat, the distance between the pier and Gabriel's dockage, I know we have a lot of boats that come in during the summer that park along that pier and go about their business into the Clay Township Pearl Beach area. I'm just wondering how far out you're going to be putting that boat and taking consideration when you do put the lift in, about those boats that do come in for that
The boat, the boat itself is only going to go out about, from the pier itself? You talking about like the beam, how far does the boat go out from the pier?
Yeah, that's correct. I don't want to have a bottleneck at the end of, or at the end of the pier, if it goes into the channel.
Yeah, it, the beam, Dave, do you know the beam on the boat? It's, I believe it's ten foot?
Okay, well, you know, once, once, have you decided, once you decide where that place is, I think someone from the board ought to go take a look and make sure it looks feasible.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I definitely.
We're looking at, right where the fireboat used to be.
Right. So that was, that was close to the shoreline.
Right. So there would, it wouldn't cause a bottleneck at all. Any other questions by any of the board members or comments?
Yeah, we're going to take a look at the final contract relatively soon with that in place.
Right. I was, I was going to either suggest to the board that you can give me the authority to sign it once the, the attorney blesses it and approves it, given the spirit of which we, we talked about tonight. Or if you want, you know, you can have us, you know, bring it back and to another board meeting to approve.
Well, one of the items, and I'm all for those, so believe me, I'll be a big supporter of it. However, with trying, in the effort of protecting the township, I'd like to see a hold harmless clause in here for the township.
There'll be a whole, there'll be a whole, whole, whole harmless clause in it. There's going to, they're going to have to provide us insurance, which they already have, and maintain the insurance on the vessels. And they'll have to name us as an insured party.
Okay.
So Mark, just to kind of speak to that, we do have a liability possibly. The township will be named on that. We do also have a participant waiver, which releases liability to the township, the pier itself, any, anything to do with the township. It's written out in that. That, that waiver document wasn't ready yet to submit. But we, we are looking at checking all the boxes as far as releasing liability for the township, for the pier, for any of that area down there.
Perfect. So I'd like to-
Appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Blair?
I just- I'm wondering how many, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I wanted to know how many slips we have, and this is going to be taking one of how many slips that we have.
There are no slips, it's a pier.
Or dock. Oh, okay.
It's, oh, I can't re, I used to know how, when we re-
How many boats can go there?
Oh, there's probably room.
Plenty of room?
Yeah, there's like, probably twelve boats per side, ten boats per side.
Okay, sounds wonderful.
And actually, the geographic location, because there's piers in there, having our vessel there actually benefits because it takes the live, takes the possibility of recreational boaters or transient boaters that are just coming in there from bumping into those piers, those columns.
Great. Sounds like a great thing for the community.
Any other questions for Blair?
I just have a comment. I know DDA is talking about bathrooms and everything, but what, what are we going to do for bathrooms there? This is operational this summer.
There's, there's porta johns right there now, that's DDA pays for.
Are the porta johns wheelchair accessible?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they're handicap approved. We checked into that already.
Yep.
And then somebody had a concern about, not to beleaguer this, but about the parking and that. Typically, the folks that'll be coming down will be one vehicle. Dave and I both live, you know, I live a couple hundred yards from there. So there won't be, there shouldn't be more than one or two vehicles associated with our efforts during the course of any day that we're doing the charters. And then again, this year, we're only going to do it on Wednesdays and Sundays. Dave and I figured out our work schedule so that we could do that. And then, and then the other part of it is, Dave is a licensed US Coast Guard captain. We'll also have two or three other individuals with myself on the boat to make sure that everybody's operating safely, and that the folks that come on the boat are taken care of.
Hey Blair, how do you select who, 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 who you take out in the process? I'm sure I'll be asked.
Dave, you want to take that one? You're muted. Well, basically, Artie, as I mentioned earlier, Dave owns a business Barrier Free Plus. What we focus on is home mobility solutions for folks that are anywhere from in a walker to folks that are, you know, multiple disabilities. So we've kind of got channels through there, caseworkers, things like that. But it's really going to be word of mouth. It's going to be open to everybody. There's no real criteria that says you have, you have to have this disability or that disability. We're partnering with some organizations. There's, there's a big event in the spring called Nets for Vets, where they take veterans out on Lake Erie. We're going to be part of that. There's another big event up in Saginaw, up at Linwood. I see, Dave, are you unmuted?
Yeah, I'm fine, I think, now.
Okay. So the question was, how do we select who gets to go? And again, I don't think there's a criteria minimum or whatever. It's about getting word of mouth out there. And as I said, we have several folks that we've dealt with that know of patients or people that are disabled that they fish, or they might want to fish. One, one local resident who's on the river found out we were doing this, and she has a special needs child, and she reached out to me. And so that's pretty much all it takes right there. Dave?
Yeah, our objective is to service as many families as we can. Now, just my experience, because of being a special needs contractor, I see us doing short duration trips, half-day trips, with one or two family members on there at a time. And I don't know if we're going to get bombarded with people, but it's going to have to pretty much be on a first come, first served basis. And I don't want to limit it, as Blair was saying, to only children that are in a wheelchair. We all know several people that use walkers. We know several that it might be autistic, that can also appreciate, you know, a few hours out, and getting away from normal lifestyles. A lot of the families that Blair and us work with on a daily basis haven't been out of their house, except for doctor's appointments. So I think we're going to be able to, between Blair and I, kind of filter through and schedule people, so that we can get as many people through between May and September.
Do you have pre-registration?
We will have pre-registration, and we just haven't, see, one of the important things to remember is that we also have a job, too. And we haven't quite figured out if we're going to just filter the pre-registration through our office, where we have a full-time person there, administrator, that can take those names. And then when Blair and I get back to the office, we could do the scheduling from there. Pretty much the way we do, you have the training that we've done before.
So one of the things, just to add on, one of the things that, securing a location so that we can move forward and plan ahead, not only with just communication, but with advertising, with getting collateral put together, is securing the location where we're going to have our base of operation. So we've already got a website, nolimitsfishingadventures.org. We're going to be launching that, hopefully in March. And then once we get, once we get all these details in place, Mark, we'll, we'll make sure that the folks have an avenue to come on and, you know, show that they have an interest in it. But we really don't know, we could be swamped, or we might not be. I don't, I don't see us not being, simply because I know the few, probably a half a dozen customers that we've dealt with, that I mentioned it to. I've got one gentleman who's, who's in a, he uses a walker, but he loves to fish. He hasn't been fishing in five years because of his legs, and his, him and his wife don't do anything but go to the doctors and come back home. And so he's, he's, he's a great candidate who will, will do a little bit more than a lot. But for a lot of families, today's point, they don't do anything but go to the doctors, go to therapy, do stuff at home. They don't get the opportunity to get out in the outdoors to get some fresh air. So a lot of, a lot of it will be fishing in six feet of water, bluegill fishing for two or three hours, just to get them out in the fresh air and on the water. So really appreciate you guys' time and, and most importantly, your support.
So board, I, I think we could entertain a motion to allow them to, No Limits Fishing Adventures, Inc., and Barrier Free, is it plus, Barrier Free?
Barrier Free Plus, yes, sir.
Yes. To dock their, their boat at our pier with the contract to file that I can bring before the board to, so to sign it. But we can at least, if the board wishes to allow them to dock this, so they can start making the plans.
I'll make a motion to allow No Limits Fishing Adventures to move forward with planning stages pending approval of the contract between Limits Fishing Adventures and Clay
Support. This is Mark Maury.
Have motion and support. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple questions.
Yeah.
Hey, Blair and Dave, I think this is, this is awesome. Awesome. So, once we get through legal, we're looking forward, Clay Township and, and No Limits Fishing Adventures putting together some, some really great trips, and you'll have our full support. Blair, what are you going to do with the fish?
Well, probably a lot of it will be catch and release. There'll be, or I'll say catch, it'll be catch, photo op, and then release. We could donate them to a local food bank, or something of that nature. We, Dave, I don't know that we really talked about it, but, but a lot of it will be catch and release.
Yeah, we're just not set up with a fish cleaning station there.
Gotcha.
So I want to make sure that what you catch, you take with you.
Definitely.
There until, you know, maybe down the road, we get the next step, and we can develop some kind of a fish cleaning station.
Absolutely. And I think, as I mentioned, I live on the river nine eight six nine Willow Court. So I've got two piers that, that are not functional for what we're doing. Otherwise, I would just do it here. But we could do something where we could drop any fish the folks could, we'll, we'll figure that out. That's, but I get what you're saying. We're not going to be stuffing dead fish carcasses in the trash cans at the fishing pier, or anything of that nature, for sure.
We're just not set up to handle that yet. But I think just admirable and awesome. I can't wait to, to liven this partnership up a little bit.
Right on. Well, we appreciate your support.
Artie, this is Joanne.
Hi, Joanne.
I think it's a wonderful idea also, and once we get all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted, and it'll be a very positive thing for the township.
Okay, any more discussion or questions?
Yeah, Artie, Dave here. I just, might you know, we're thankful, and we are glad to be able to use that location. But we also appreciate all of your input. This is a not-for-profit that we are starting to operate in a safe manner. Um, this is a not-for-profit that we are starting to operate in a safe manner. But the marketing skills that you all, I as, uh, members of the township could be, uh, very helpful to us also. So any input, ideas, ways to dress up, made to get people more involved and create this from being maybe one boat, two, in a couple of years, three or four boats doing something similar would be very much appreciated. And we take on and entertain all of your ideas.
Okay.
Sounds like, sounds like we need another peer.
No, it sounds like they're going to need more than two days.
Yeah.
So, all right, here, uh, any more discussion for the board members? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Kristy Hilton. Yes. Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Brissa Regan.
Oh, yeah.
Joanne Shurkey.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson.
Yes.
That's everyone.
Okay, motion passes. Next week, I received this letter from our, actually from, uh, the, our attorney that the court sent them asking us to, um, wipe off all these old, tickets, if you will, that are really uncollectible. They just want to take it off the, the books. And I thought, well, I, I feel fine, kind of fine, just tell them and do it. I think it's a board decision. So I brought it up to the board, um, and, uh, to do so. So I guess I'll open up for discussion or, uh?
Well, I have, I have a question already. Uh, how do we get into position where we have these fines going out and they're approved by the court and nobody pays them? What sort of occasion?
Well, you know, not sure if you notice, you know, they're back from year 2000, 2001, majority of them. Two, and, uh, I, I, I was pretty dumbfounded when I saw them too. Um, but it is what it is. There's one in there from 97. And, uh, our attorney says, yeah, there's no way we can collect these. And so they, they're, they're, the court's switching their system and they, uh, basically asked us to write them off. And, um, and, uh, attorney said, you know, they're, they're basically uncollectible. So.
So is that the ruling from the court or, uh, admissible?
Yeah, that's what, I mean, it was written in the letter, explained in the letter.
What about the more recent ones, that like from 2016 and 2018? That's five years and less. I wonder why those are uncollectible.
Yeah, well, that's what she said. They're, they're all uncollectible. I don't know the, the details of the specific ones. Yeah, I see there's like two, maybe three.
Our attorney, Joanne, this, our attorney is, is okay with this?
Yeah, she's the one that sent me the letter asking us to do this. Or, or I guess the email, um, to do a blanket order to eliminate, uh, the, these, uh, outstanding tickets. With, I didn't even count them up, where there's about 15 of them or so. But. So.
Artie, can you just clarify if this is a loss of revenue for us?
No, it's not.
How many fines have we been paid in the last year, I wonder?
Well, quite a few. I don't, you know, have that in front of me.
Oh, I know, but I mean, you know, we're, we're, uh, we're giving.
More than, more than what's on this, more than what's, what's on this page, so.
There's about 35, so not more than 15, but I see if they're 20 years old, it's going to be hard to get that money.
Right.
Just wish we had more detail, you know, on the current ones. I don't know.
Well, I don't think the board, every, you, you want to know every ticket we write and it is, you know, in, in that much detail. I, I, I assume we can come up with some sort of report, uh, on outstanding tickets. But that doesn't answer this question.
Well, I mean, in the, in the letter from Janelle Mousset, she says, these are all old, but I mean, some of them are only three years old. That's not really that old.
Yeah, there's what, three of them?
Well, I guess the interesting, well, with all these infractions, with all the infractions that we see out here, are we confident that all these infractions have been taken care of?
I couldn't even tell you. I, I would hope so after, you know, being 20 years old or if not, I'm sure they're, they, they got written up like a second time. I, I don't know. I didn't put any work or, or research in it.
Right. Well, yeah, I understand that, but I'm just making a statement basically.
Right. You're asking questions I don't know.
Yeah. Nobody knows.
Like I say, these.
Go out and check the, uh, addresses, right?
Yeah, these are uncollectible. Um, our attorney said they're uncollectible. The court's asking us to, uh, write them off. I felt funny doing it without board approval. That's why I brought it up to the board.
I'll offer a motion to have anything prior to 2016 dismissed, um, but the majority of us have been on this board since 16. I think that those records are, are worth looking into, at least, um, since we've been on the board. Um, if anybody wants to support that.
I, I would not. Okay, Maureen supported. Was that Maureen? No, Chrissy. Okay, so, so we have the, the motion from 2016 or 18?
Uh, prior to 2016 be dismissed.
Okay.
I think we have the means to look into, uh,
Those three.
You know, to see if it's worthy to be collectible. I mean, they could have filed bankruptcy. They could have, but it's worth checking into at least the recent ones.
No, I see three of them. One, two, three. All right, I, I support that myself. Any discussion? Does everyone understand the motion?
Sounds like a good one.
I believe so.
Yeah.
All right. All in favor of the motion expunging of all of the prior 2016? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose?
Aye.
Did we have someone oppose?
No.
Okay. All right, uh, so motion pass. And next we have, uh, policy update on expenditure authorization. Um, most townships our size actually, uh, let's, um, department heads actually spent up to $5,000 without, uh, board approval. $1,000, it's, 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 and, and these, this is all money that's, these expenditures are things that are budgeted for. And when they still have to get, uh, over a thousand dollars, at least two quotes. So they, it doesn't alleviate them from those, uh, those response of those, uh, policies. But, uh, they're, they're just trying to say, uh, before they bring it to the board for our approval, they want to raise the limit from $1,000 to $3,000. And in lieu of bringing it to the board, they have to have the approval from two other trustees. Uh, and like I say, and these, these are all items that, you know, they, they have to have room in their budget for. I think, uh, most of our, I, I'm, I'm going to say most, I think our, uh, our department heads are very fiscally responsible, as opposed in others in years past. And, uh, um, I, I, I don't like handcuffing them and, uh, uh, and, and stuff that makes sense as, and may caught taking too much time. I'll open it up for discussion.
Where, where does this new financial administration expenditure come from? Is, is it a request from our department heads? Because I didn't know we had a problem.
We don't, we, well, like, um, our last meeting, you know, the, the, uh, chief, uh, coach, he wanted to buy bullets.
Yep.
And we, uh, he brought to, to attention of myself and I think both Cindy and Christie. Oh yeah, for sure. You know, we need to buy bullets. Um, but we, we, we really had to wait to get it approved from the whole board. Um, I don't think there was too much discussion about not buying the bullets. It, it, it's just so technically, you know, they would have to wait, uh, until our, our board meeting to buy the bullets. He had the money in his budget. Um, it was just because his policy is he couldn't pull the, pardon the button, the trigger right away. So ba- basically that's what it's bringing. It's allowing our department heads, um, we're giving them a little bit more responsibility. And, um, so they can do things a little, little, a little quicker, a little more efficient.
So in that case, in that case with the ammunition is a non, uh, as a non, uh, approval, uh, the department had did call, I believe each and every, uh, board member and advised them of the situation that we were in. So.
Right, well.
And I'm in agreement with Chris. My question was, how did this generate and why? So you explain.
If it actually generated from that, um, the fire department also has issues at times when they have mechanics out doing mandated maintenance. While the guys are there wanting to go ahead with repairs, um, technically if those repairs are over a thousand dollars, they're not supposed to have it repaired, um, which then can cost us more money in the long run because that mechanic will have to come back after it's board approved. Um, the water department now with these new meters is going to run in, start running into issues with expenditures. If they want to order repair parts or extra parts on hand, so, um, I mean, rather than just raise it up to 3,000, uh, we discussed, um, in the office about at least having a couple of members of the board of trustees give prior approval, but give them the $3,000 limit.
Just recently, we had a, a mechanic, like Cindy said, fix, working on the, um, the fire trucks, had an issue with the throttle. It's $1,200 to fix it. It's a safety issue. Are we not going to fix it and wait for board approval for, for two weeks before we fix it? Um, that, that's, that's what kind of generated things like that.
I think the bullets were closer to 6,000, weren't they? And didn't we all get an email about that? I didn't get a phone call, but I got an email. But I responded to.
Yeah, the, the, there was bullets and guns. I'm not sure. I, that was just one thing that, you know, um.
I don't know. I'm thinking maybe 2,000 instead of 3,000, I would be more willing to do. I don't know. Things that went up in price, so I know a thousand dollars doesn't go far anymore.
Right.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve the, um, expenditure authorization as presented, but the changes highlighted in yellow.
Support.
Support.
Okay, we have motion. Who's supported?
Joanne.
Okay. Any, uh, any discussion?
What, what if we, uh, I, I, the principle is, is certainly something that I can get behind. And I understand we're trying to streamline this process. What if we had verbal approval from four of our trustees instead of two? Then you have the majority. Is that, is that too much red tape?
We can try it verbal or email.
Uh, yeah, verbal's fine. Um, but, but then we know that we've got board approval in the majority. And, you know, most of us are available for a phone call. At least four of seven of us would be, especially if it's during hours.
Right.
You get, you know, the big three are, are usually in the office and accessible Monday through Thursday. And then you just need to reach one out of the other four board members? Seems like that would make sense, but, you know, I don't want to overstate the, I trust our department heads. I really do. Um, but we have to think about not only now, but 20 years down the road.
Why don't we cut it down to three and make it the supervisor, treasurer and clerk?
I, I would just say three. Uh, I, I, I was thinking four. That's a, a forum that might get us in trouble with the Open Meetings Act. Yep, but I, I don't have a problem with three.
I could go three, but I, I don't think it needs to be just the big three because if the one of those aren't available, then they're in the same boat.
Just three trustees.
Three trustees. I'd be good with that. Cindy, are you okay with that revision?
Do you want me to amend it to a minimum of three?
Yeah, I'd feel better.
I can do that.
I'm in.
All right.
Three. Wait, wait, before I change, you know, I have to amend my second.
Yes.
Three trustees?
It'd be, well, we're all trustees, Joanne.
Yes, I understand that.
So, yeah, any three members of the board of trustees?
Yes.
Could it be you, Chris and Maureen?
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so to re- restate the motion, uh, the expenses over a thousand dollars to a maximum of $3,000 will be verbally approved by a minimum of three board of trustees members prior to purchase. Everybody understand that?
Yes.
Can we make an email approval? So there's some kind of a trail, is that a verbal?
Well, I would say verbal or email.
I mean, I'd like to, I'd rather see some kind of a paper trail and email myself.
Maureen, I, 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 I'm with you in what you're saying, but let's take the mechanic version, you know, Chief Rose has got a fire truck at the shop. There's not always time to push out an email and then generate a response from the email. So I was, in my mind, I was, I was thinking about Chief Rose's situation with one of his pieces of equipment. He would want to make a phone.
Well, you could call, you could call or text and then say, I'm going to send you an email. Please send it to me in writing. You know what I mean? So it's a combination. Like I don't check my email all day either. But, you know, you could call me and text me and then say, we're going to send you this email right now. This is the situation. Can you send it back to me, please?
We can follow up with the email to the board.
Well, that way we have some kind of paper trail of who, uh, who approved it, copy all of us on it so that we know what's going on. And I mean, that's, I would be comfortable with that, but I, I think we all need to be notified. You know, you get three people to approve it and then just copy everybody and say, this is, you know, this is how, what happened, just so you know what's going on.
I, I would suggest to you that that might be a little much. You, you know, it.
I, I would say we just, we're probably going to do that anyhow.
I mean, because it's easy to do. You can do, you know, they, any contractor could come out with, we could have a $10,000 bill, but they do, you know, four 2,500s. So I, I just want transparency so we all know what's happening, what we're spending money, money on. And I mean, I know the department heads are responsible, so it's not a problem if you're going to get three people to approve. And I mean, I know the department heads are responsible, so it's not a problem, if you're gonna get three people to approve it, they just have to. Text back, I approve it. Or, you know, email back, I approve it, and then when it's all, everybody emails them, reply to all and send it to all of us.
Maureen, there is a policy that they can't break up a ten dollar transaction into four twenty-five hundred dollar transactions. I mean, this is just one small. Policy out of probably about three hundred of them.
Right.
Well, I'm just thinking like the mechanic situation, that they could say, okay, just put it each one into a different. Compartmentize it, okay.
After it was approved by the three, would it come to the board?
Yes. Well, it would still be in bills payable.
Okay, all right, good enough. Makes sense.
Right, that is the point too, it will still be in bills payable.
Ready to vote?
Yep.
Yep, well, I'm, I'm okay as long as there's email involved.
And like we said, it still goes in bills payable that gets approved also.
I just don't like strictly verbal, I got a problem with that.
Okay. All right, let's do a roll call vote.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Krista Regan.
Yes.
Joanne Shurkey.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes, Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
I think she went mute.
I say, if you say verbal, is it verbal or email, I say no, doesn't matter, but.
Okay, so. That's a no vote, Cindy.
I got it.
Okay. All right, next we have the garbage refuse and recycling, recycling contract. We have Dan from Priority Waste, I believe.
Yes, hello, Artie, hello, everybody.
Hey, Dan, and I, I did call Dan earlier. I, we, I haven't got a blessing on, on the contract from our attorney yet, but I wanted Dan to. Be available tonight for any questions and. Go, go over the. With, with the, the services and, and what they plan to do for us. And there was questions, I did go out to bid and they were low bidder and. I actually, before you, I turn it over to you, Dan. I've talked to a number of people about Priority Waste and I'm impressed with what I've heard so far. I, I talked, I'm a, a personal friend of the owners of Great Lakes Recycling. I told them, hey, you know, what, what can you tell me about Priority Waste, this excellent company? Who are you, who are you dealing with, Artie, there? I said, Stan, and you go, oh, great guy, great guy. And they're growing fast and everything we can see, that's a first-class company. I called New Baltimore. Their city manager, who I know very well, Bonnie, and she said that it was rough going for about three weeks. But once the, the transition, I think you had a problem with maybe trucks or something, Dan, I'm not sure. But once you had that, that corrected and stuff, it's been going great. I talked to Grosse Lake Island, the head of the Public Works there. They, they gave Priority Waste nothing but kudos. And also, our county, head of our. County, Jeff Baum, also reiterated it's a, a good company and they have, get a lot of positive feedback from them, so. You wanna go through your. Proposal bid, or your proposal?
Absolutely.
And the, any board members have any questions, they can fire away.
Yeah, good evening, everyone, as mentioned, my name is Dan Benay, I'm a Municipal Relations Director for Priority Waste. Vince Soyamp, our COO, COO is also on the call in case there are any questions for him. But what we strive to be is, is the local company that provides great service. One thing that we will never save or cut money on is, is the customer service aspect of it. We make sure that we have the necessary individuals available for phone calls that may be received from time to time. Whether it be for special pickups, maybe a late putout and they forgot when their trash is being picked up. Or the accidental miss, because we know we're not perfect, but what we strive to be is, is quick in acting when there is a mistake. Like what Artie had mentioned about New Baltimore, it was a, a, a contract award with three weeks notice on a holiday week start. So there was a little confusion from the residents on that. And they weren't sure what date to put it out. We also didn't work, and we ended up going back, their, their usual service is Wednesday. We went back Thursday and Friday to make sure everybody's trash and recycling and compost at that time was picked up. And, and that's, that's who we are. In our essence is, is to be, like I mentioned, that, that company that you can partner with. Will be active in your community with fundraising events and, and any events that you may have, that's something that we take pride in. Knowing that we, we have friends, we have colleagues and maybe even ourselves that live inside these communities and call them our homes or secondary homes. Or, or just to go up to Harson's Island and, and visit. We want to make sure that we, we're known as, as the good company that you partner with. In the, in the bid, it is broken down and, and I know on the attachment where it states the contract. Has all the pricing listed out that we had proposed. First year starting at seven thirty-five for the residential trash per home per month. And then the monthly for recycling at two sixty-five. So the, the homes on the mainland that have both services are at even ten dollars a, a month per, for the service. For the ones with just the trash service is seven thirty-five. We're gonna be buying new, new vehicles for your service. All of our trucks are two thousand eighteen, nineteen or twenty years. So on top of the fact that our trucks will be coming in and will be new and freshly painted. Our backups and spares are also new within a year or two of service. We have a preventative maintenance plan that go through pre and post trip inspections as well as. The, the standard DOT compliance that we must abide by, full-time maintenance staff. That if there ever was an emergency, they can come up and fix it quickly. Or dispatch a secondary truck and pull the other one out of service. We do have up to three or four spares on a day where they would be available again, in case that, that emergency happens. On the, the, the last piece I'll talk to before you have any questions. We don't want this to be a change in service other than the, the smiling faces that hurt in the back of the trucks. As well as the, the bright color yellow on our trucks. The, the service will be rendered the same, the items will be picked up. Bulk is not a requirement to call in, I don't know if that was how it was previously for residents. But if they have a, a, a large item that needs to be put out, we'll take it, we'll get it off their curb, we'll make your, keep your community clean. And the, the only thing that we ask is any pre-on bearing appliances that the pre-on is removed, just for safe disposal. In, in our environment is taking care of, with those white goods, those appliance goods. So I'll, I'll wrap it up by just saying, I, I'm very appreciative to have the opportunity. I know that it's not official yet, but in hopes that we're able to service the Clay Township residents as well as service all of you. And develop a, a long-term lasting relationship, so I'll open it up for any questions anybody might have.
One, one thing that impressed me about Priority is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dan. They have weekly safety meetings with all their drivers for their crews. And they have daily crew meetings in the morning, don't you? To go over. Any, anything that needs to be go, going over about the, the day stops, right?
Correct, yeah, we have weekly safety topics that they cover prior to their pre and post trip inspections and before they take off for the day. Any feedback that we receive on a day-to-day basis are supervisors, Mark, Greg or Bill. Bill's our operations manager. They have those discussions with the crews in the morning before they take off. So everybody checks in between six and six-thirty, they don't hit the road until after seven. And again, any of those safety topics, especially, we want to discuss. Any adjustments to service or feedback that we receive, positive, negative, anywhere neutral, we want to share that with them. Because as you know, it, there's a lot of hands in this service, there's a lot of people that. Will be servicing their households and, and frankly, people take trash personally when it's missed or not taken care of. And that's something that we are always striving to be better at and, and we want to make sure at the end of the day, we, we provide the service. And all of our crews make it home to their families and friends safe.
Okay, and you, you'll do handicap pickups too? In other words, if someone's elderly can't get the garbage out to the side of the road, you'll go to like their garage and grab it?
Correct, yep, all we would need is the, the registered address for those. What we will do prior to the transition, if, if again, we're lucky to be awarded the contract. Is we will have every residence address in our internal system. That in an internal system will also track in case the, a resident has called in multiple times in, let's say, a couple of months. So that way we can A, address those issues with everybody directly as, as far as our crew. And we can pinpoint those, those pains that, there are pain spots that a resident or a service area may have. It keeps us accountable, but also gives us real-time feedback to constantly improve.
Does anybody have any questions for Dan?
Any. So Dan, do you prefer, if there are some issues that the residents contact you guys directly or contact the township and we contact you?
I would prefer that they call us direct, because that way we can handle it without any type of delay. We do have the permanent customer service representatives in our office out of Clinton Township. And they can dispatch either a supervisor, who will always be in your community on days of service. Or a truck that is in service right there to pick up the item or correct the issue, whatever, whatever it may be. I, I'll speak to our supervisors, Mark and Greg, and we're always adding on to that. On the days of service, you will always have a supervisor in the community. So if there's a, a, a missed pickup that they can pick up in their truck and take it to our, our large truck. They'll do that to make it easier, especially with the Harson's Island and going across the barge, it may not be as, as easily done. So we want to make sure that we have the extra hands on, on.
Okay, I will say I did check with a couple of residents that I know in New Baltimore, and they seem to be very pleased with the service from your guys. They don't necessarily have to replace their trash cans every month, so that's a good thing.
That's great.
In our time, a lot of time they get knocked around, so seems your guys are very nice with them.
We try to be, these cold weathers, these negative temper, temperature weathers and the wind chill, don't do very well with the plastic and rubber made materials.
Understand.
Hey, Dan, I know someone's gonna ask or should ask or think about it, where do you take our recyclables?
We will be taking it in between two locations, there's IDF up in Emily City as well as Hamtramck Recycling. So because of the location of your community, if there's, if there's a midday dump that needs to happen. IDF is a, a shorter drive. At the end of the day, where we park our trucks now, is in Hamtramck and they'll, they'll take them down to Hamtramck Recycling at the end of the day. Both are very reputable companies, both do a phenomenal job with recycling. We, we don't own any material recovery facilities. So we want to make sure that when we take material to a, a, a company that, that does do that, it's a highly reputable source. And the materials that you're paying to get recycled, in every effort is taken to be recycled.
What about the recycle bins that we have, are those outsourced privately or they come from their, our current provider?
Well, M-Tera provided us with, with recycle bins and so will Priority. They'll be a different color, but I'm sure they'll, they'll utilize the green ones too.
Okay.
Yep.
So at, at this time, I. I'm not, I, I just can't pull the trigger on, on, on the contract just yet until we get a few legal things cleared up. And.
Can I ask a question, Artie?
Yeah.
Can, can, can you tell us how it compares to our current contract? I don't know if I missed that information somewhere, but.
Yeah, didn't I send you a spreadsheet?
I, I guess I missed that, I know you told me it was lower, but I'm trying to figure that out.
Yeah, it's averaging, you know, a couple, three dollars a month lower per, per household.
Okay. Because I saw with the rate of gas going up too, that, you know, it could go up another fifty cents per household. We all kind of expect gas to go up, so that's concerning.
Well, as fuel, yeah, that, that's standard with any garbage contract.
Sure.
But I'm, I'm looking truthfully more at the, the service part of it too.
Right. Sounds great.
We. I mean, I. Everything I've seen and talked to, I, priorities been, are impressed me and. I've had a lot of, I got a lot of scars with M-Tera over the years.
Dog. Days and times, Dan, are, are you, you have spots slated for our contract? Or would you be picking up where M-Tera leaves off, or how does that go?
I don't know exactly what times M-Tera services, but with your community will be on the same days for the, the, the. The way that it is, it is designed now will be serviced on the same days. The routing, I'm sure will be a little different because I don't have that information. But I believe it is the plan of our, of our operations team to get there first thing in the morning. So that way we can be in and out as early as possible to avoid any disruption in the midday of traffic and, and, and whatnot of people returning from work. So, but of course, we'll take all of your information, your, your feedback into when is the best time to service in certain areas? So that way, because you know your community better than any of us will. And, and we'll take that to make sure that we, we work with you in this, in this partnership.
Yeah, basically, it's, we tell our residents they gotta have their garbage out at seven AM.
Yep, and we would mirror that, seven AM would be the earliest that we could service. And I believe six PM was the last time that we could, but our hope is to be in and out of your community before, you know, three o'clock. That would, that's usually our, our time that we prefer to be out. So those returning from work are not disrupted with our traffic.
Okay. Any more questions right now for Dan?
So when you guys are delayed for holiday, you still do next day pickup?
Correct.
Okay.
They, they observe the seven big ones, you know, Christmas, New Year's, Easter, Memorial, Labor, Fourth of July, Thanksgiving, I probably forgot one. In there.
Yeah, the holidays, the holidays that we, that we observe are New Year's Day, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day, Thanksgiving and Christmas. The, the six majors, Easter is not affected.
Oh, really, okay. All right, well, I'm hoping to get this all figured out and. And. Start a good working relationship with you guys soon as we can.
Absolutely.
Does board have any more questions for Dan?
Some potential contracts start and stop dates. Obviously, those are gonna be a little bit flexible based on our township discussions with our own attorneys?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, hearing none. Thank you, Dan, so much, I'll be talking to you in the next day or two, okay?
Great, thank you.
All right. Thank, thank you much. All right, yeah, I want to put that to bed sooner versus later. Very quickly. Moving right along, medical marijuana ordinance. My perception, I think our police chief would agree. One of the big problems that Clay Township has is we don't have ordinance. big problems that Clay Township has is we don't have ordinance for medical marijuana uh concerning the Medical Marijuana Act and uh and growing medical marijuana. All our other communities too, Elgnac does, uh Ira, Casco, New Baltimore, all the other surrounding communities that have passed restrictive um ordinances and what's happened now, these people realize that and they're flocking to uh Clay Township, so to speak, and um I actually was going to, I I write uh uh ordinance under general law restricting it as much as I we could. Um presented to the attorney and they say you just can't do it already, it's gotta go in our zoning ordinance through um the um planning commission. And uh and the attorney suggested, why don't we, why don't you um send or have your board send them an order or direction to have them come up with uh an answer for the Medical Marijuana Act and uh and to restrict it and give them sixty days. And I said, okay, we can do do that, that's what I'm proposing for our board to do. Uh I I know that they it would be difficult for them to have the ordinance passed because they 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 have to do a public comment and put out for public notice and that sort of thing. But um I'd like our board to give them direction to make a a medical marijuana ordinance a top priority for the planning commission going forward. If that makes sense.
Are are they not working on this? I mean, I believe we discussed this at two joint meetings.
Yeah, I I believe we did, and I ha- have not seen anything on the ordinance or or on their agendas. Uh I believe they were they're dealing with tiny houses and something else. I can't remember off the top of my head. And uh that's why I thought we try to do some on general law, then I was instructed, no, it's gotta come through planning. And uh so I uh and I did talk to Rod this week. And he was going to, and he agreed it it has to go through planning and um um so I I I I believe he's had conversations with them, but I I wanna make it official that uh we make it a priority of the planning commission to uh deal with this problem. We we're we're having these things pop up everywhere and it is bringing in other problems and then that comes with it than just growing uh medical marijuana. Um if it's next door, we don't have any ordinances, right, or we don't have an ordinance uh restricting or controlling like the odor. Uh if if you live next to a house that's growing this marijuana, it smells like skunk. Um and also for lighting, for uh the the light that it could throw. Uh there's a there's a a whole list of things that are in these ordinances and they can restrict it uh how they choose. It's a plan question for the planning commission um by uh commercial C one, C two, three, C three that way or or uh I I did send an email to Rod, our our little planner, you know, if they if they left it in residential, they could do different districts and residential. Uh you can make it um a requirement that it can't be a rental house. It has and the people have to live there. Uh I I hear these these stories of people will rent a house and they'll be growing it and and with all the humidity and everything, there's a problem with mold and and it literally destroys these homes. And it turns them into tear downs, so.
If you if you look into commercial, then they can um theoretically split up a building and have multiple.
That's the problem. You can have a little little condo going. Uh in other words, they can rent different sections. Uh so yeah, so that's, I I I know it. There's no perfect answer, but um I I uh the planning commission in my eyes really needs to uh to address this and uh cause well, you you've you've heard Mike, our police chief in the in the office every weekend or every week, he's he's having issues with these popping up all over. And it's gonna be issue with our building department or it's an issue with already for our building department. So there there were in one, actually, I was told there's over seven hundred plants in a house.
What is the, what's the medical limit that they can have?
Well, it it's, I believe you can have, oh, I used to know seventy-two per medical provider, but but you could say, I I have five medical providers or ten or twelve medical providers uh growing here.
But if we restrict that residential, they can only grow for themselves?
Yes. Okay.
Uh I bet what, you're only allowed three at that point in time or?
You you you're you're allowed twelve plants per patient and you're allowed to have well, with yourself, six, six patients.
Well, I was gonna address it during board members, but I'll do it now. Uh the planning commission is uh gonna take it as a top priority. Um we're also setting up a couple of meetings uh for the next couple of months uh to handle the ordinances that are coming with the, again, with a top priority being the medical marijuana. So um we'll be, we'll be driving that down as well. Uh however, uh I can make a motion to uh direct the planning commission to uh address the medical marijuana ordinances as a top priority as soon as possible.
Okay, can you can can you uh have it so they they don't have to have anything passed, but uh at least a rough draft in sixty days?
Send within sixty days, right? A rough draft within sixty days.
An answer, an answer in sixty days.
Right, answer in sixty days, yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Marcus.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah.
This is new, this is Joanne, I'll support it.
Okay, we have motion and uh and support. Any more uh discussion?
Yeah, I I just wanna put in a couple couple thoughts here to the to the couple members of the planning commission, to my fellow trustees. Um I'm in fire estimation, uh fire restoration, construction estimating. And I probably go on one fire loss, devastating fire loss a month on people trying to grow their own medical marijuana or their own marijuana. So what's happening is everybody has the grow lights and they wanna try and harness everything and they've got air conditioning and humidifiers and dehumidifiers. But what they're not doing is they're not harnessing the energy correctly. So there's too many volts, too many amps coming into confined spaces and they're burning their houses down. I see it at least once a month. So this is a real safety concern, not only for the residents, but for the township. Um and and something to consider is not only the growing of the medical marijuana, but also the extraction of the oils, the extraction of the different oils that are very popular right now. Um it's a lot of uh butane to make that happen. Well, butane's highly flammable, right? So there's just a, there's some safety concerns that that I'd love for our planning commission to start addressing and certainly for my fellow trustees to get behind them. Um if there's things that we can do to help facilitate the process, um you know, I'd love to see a safer community for us all.
Yeah, I I had a a PowerPoint that, in fact, I sent it to uh Mark about uh the safety concerns of it. And actually, DTE came to us and said, holy cow, you gotta do something. I mean, these homes are asking for so much more more service than than they they really should be able to have and they can handle as far as the service of their power, so. Uh and then, in fact, that was in in the um what I suggested to uh Rod, our, you know, have it uh that that aspect dealt to it. You know, four hundred and eighty amp service for.
I'm kinda jealous. I can't run my uh microwave and my coffee maker at the same time without blowing a circuit.
Right. So.
Well, and and frankly speaking, a lot, a lot of these people are putting jumper bars in their panel boxes and they're running the power illegally, right? So they're in certain cases, there's no way for DTE to even monitor what the heck's even going on. So, yeah, strong ordinances, strongly worded ordinances would would probably go a long ways to to support our community from a safe perspective.
Right. Like I say, the problem is we're the last one to the dance, so right now they're all flocking into Clay, so. All right.
Can I, can I ask Kathy, cause since she's the chair of the planning commission, can I, can I ask her if they've already been working on this? Cause
Well
and maybe they already have. Is it okay to ask her that?
Well, I I brought it to their attention this past week and I think they are are planning on it. Sure, Kathy, is there, is that what you're saying?
Have you brought this to us before or anything, Kathy?
It's been brought to our attention before. Planning Commission has been waiting very patiently for the Board of Trustees because it was a ruling and you can ask Rod and or township attorney, the ruling came down last year, towards the end of the year. Planning Commission needed direction from Board of Trustees. In my response to Artie in his disagreements with how I'm running the board, I made it very clear and all of you are on receipt of that that there was a breakdown apparently in communication, don't have an any idea where it occurred. I'll take some of the blame for it, definitely not taking all the blame for it. Board of Trustees has to give the planning commission direction. You apparently now are doing so, which is perfectly understandable. More than happy to address this issue, this issue. We've known about it for quite a while. There's many things that are happening in this township. I live next to one that's happening and the township has not chosen to take any action against it, which they could have, but they didn't. So, yeah, I'm more than happy as a member of the planning commission, along with the other eight members, to address this issue as soon as possible with the township attorney, with the planning commission, with our planners, to make it a reasonable way to handle the situation. It's a item that's been moving along through the court system. Whether it's in the municipality or whether it's in the court system, it's people who are using it or doing it illegally. But, yeah, it's something that's out there and I'm glad it's been brought to the board's attention again. For whatever reason, it got dropped for lack of probably. So, yeah, we are more than happy to address it. And it is an item that's on our February twenty-fourth meeting. We have a March tenth meeting and a March twenty-fourth meeting. We have to have obviously, public hearings to address this and they have no problem doing it. If any board member has any questions, please reach out, talk to me and or any other of the board members. We'd be happy to discuss it, right?
Well, I'm glad it sounds like you're positioned and ready, so it's not like you guys didn't wanna move on it. You've been, you've been wanting to move on it. Okay, good.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, is there any more uh discussion? So uh Mark, the 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 motion is that uh directing the planning commission to take up the medical marijuana ordinance and get us a answer for in sixty days, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so long as everyone understands that, um any more discussion? Hearing none. All all in support of the motion signified by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Next thing on our agenda is a close, a close uh, or no, no, it's not. We have a a resolution, uh Blue Bill, Blue Bill Bridge is gonna have to uh be replaced. And uh I need to get a resolution passed so uh we can start working on the federal and state grants uh to have that replaced. I have to, we have to have it all done by April first for two thousand twenty-four funding. So that's why I was trying to do this on in a hurry. Um this resolution pretty much copies what uh we did for the Flamingo Bridge. And um I asked for the board to uh pass it. Would you mute it, Artie?
What's that?
Are you waiting for a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, board, that we approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash O two, the resolution relative to request for federal and state bridge replacement funds.
Support.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any uh discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Joanne Sherkey.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Last thing we do, we we have a a closed session, uh discussion on pending litigation. And so what I I propose to do, I'm going to move up uh board member comments. We do it now. And then uh afterwards, we'll go into the closed session and we can uh um go ahead and uh end the meeting then. So I'd like to do board member comments right now, if that's okay with everybody. And um assuming so. Cindy, do you have any board member comments?
Um just that, um we're still working on our agenda software. If anybody's been on the website um under documents, they should have seen the new banner. Um we also added under documents a meetings link that goes directly to there. Um when the agenda is posted, it's up under current events. Afterwards, it goes under archived and then the minutes are also posted up there um when they're completed. So that's where you will find our agenda and going forward. This is all placed up there under a third party. Um when I create the agenda, it automatically gets uploaded right to our website through them. So it's not something that I post or have scroll over the rights. I can contact them um about the agenda not printing. Um I'm just not sure how far I'll get with that. That's all I got.
Okay, thanks. Mark, do you have anything?
Yeah, the um uh just following up with what Cindy said about the um agenda that I uh I got all the documents downloaded. Uh however, the agenda itself uh was very difficult to do. It wouldn't print once I did uh download it. So I had to go back door. I went back to the regular uh home site on the website and uh went to went to meetings and documents there and and was able to print it from there. So just a uh FYI on that. And I'm excited about the No Limits Fishing Adventures. I think that's gonna be great for the uh area, including uh that whole Pearl Beach uh Pearl Beach area down there. Um and obviously, we have a lot of ordinances to deal with. Uh so the uh the the twice monthly meetings are going to uh hopefully offset those meetings uh or ordinances, I suppose, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Joanne?
Oh, yes. First of all, I'd like to apologize for not being able to uh get on sooner to the meeting, but I think uh one of the first things I'll do is throw this computer into the recycle bin. Get a new one, cause it sure has given me problems the last few days. But other than that, I'm very pleased with the um presentation about the um No Limits Fishing Adventure and the um garbage refuge and moving forward with the Medical Marijuana Ordinance. So those are all very positive things that um needed, need to be taken care of. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Chrissy?
I just want to remind everyone that property taxes are due tomorrow. The office is open until 6:00. And then we have the two drop boxes that can be utilized as well. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Maureen?
Well, I want to say Happy President's Day and hope everybody enjoyed it. What I did, just on the agenda to print it out, is I opened a Word document, I copied and pasted it onto the Word document and then I could print it. So that's always a workaround that anyone can use to print out the agenda if they need to. I don't know if it's possible, but it sounds like people have been very concerned about the comments and, you know, wanting them at the end, at the beginning. If it's possible to do both, maybe we could look at, look at that. As long as, you know, the, the time doesn't, you know, get excessive, I, I suppose. But I understand people's concerns with that. The minutes of the meeting kind of go with the videos, I think. And, because the minutes are very bullet pointed, where the videos of the meetings tell everything. So I'm glad that Artie's posting those and making them available to everybody, you know. And I think that's important. If we don't have the access to the videos, we'd have to get more detailed on the minutes of the meetings. But it was a great meeting tonight, so I'm excited about the township saving money with the refuse. So good job on that, Artie. And the fishing adventures is gonna be really a positive thing, too. So looking forward to everything coming to fruition, that's it.
Hey, thank you. Who am I missing? Chris?
Yeah, first, love the agenda, love the links on it. I found it very user friendly, I got no, no problems with it at all. Secondly, big snow coming tonight, it's gonna blow around. So let's make sure that all the intake and exhaust ports around your home are not covered up in a snowbank. So your dryers, your heat intake, your heat exhaust, let's make sure those things don't get covered up. Lastly, I'm looking forward to working with the planning commission on this medical marijuana ordinance. It's an important one for our township and looking forward to getting behind them and giving them our full support.
All right, thank you. I'd like to mention everyone, I know Krista about the cold and everything. This is the first year, in about two, three years, we've had good ice on the, on Anchor Bay and, and all the canals and everything. We had a bad accident this weekend where a snowmobiler was killed. People, be careful on the ice and, and run around in snowmobiles at night or during the day. I know that there was a, a lake somewhere, inland lake, where a snowmobile hit an ice shanty and killed two ice fishermen. I'm all about having fun out there and enjoy yourself, but, but please be careful. And I know it's all, we've had a lot of cold and, and, but no ice is safe ice. It wears out underneath and I've fallen through ice a few times myself. But excited about No Limits Fishing Adventure and everything else going forward. Got a lot of positive stuff going on. So just gotta keep the ball rolling and, and, and make it all happen. I'm excited about things we have going, coming down the pipe. I'm excited about looking at archery range for the park on the island. I think that will be well utilized. And we know is maybe we can get our archery team going and, and get some competition with other communities going, going on it. So that's all I have. And so I'm going, we're gonna be going into closed session. So that being said, I'm gonna kick everybody off that's not board members. So thanks for joining our meeting.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session at 9:07 for discussion on pending litigation.
Support. Okay, we have motion and support. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, Artie, I still participate in that or?
Yep, yep, yep.
All right, thanks.
Okay, so I have to, um.
I'm the 5865300113, that's me, Artie.
Okay.
I called in by my phone.
Well, I'm asking people if you're not on the board to remove, but if not, it's gonna start removing. It's gonna take a little bit of time.